Call this meeting of the Aurora City Council of November twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen. To order, Clark, will you please call the robe?
Alderman Yamas?
Here.
Alderman Garza?
Here.
Alderman Messiakos?
Here.
Alderman Danah? Alderman Franco? Alderman Seville? Alderman Hartburns? Alderman Smith?
Here.
Alderman Bug?
Here.
Alderman Machi? Alderman Jenkins? Alderman O'Connor?
And I am present, and I want to make a correction, today is the twenty-sixth, not the twenty-fifth. I guess I'm a day late. We're all still here. Some days I feel a dollar short. Please rise for a moment in the honor of our active service men and service women, but our veterans. Please remain standing. Alderman Bug is going to introduce the young men and women who will lead us in our pledge of allegiance, followed by our invocation by Alderman Shakita Hartburns. A moment of silence before Alderman Bug introduces us to the folks leading us in the pledge.
And as we prepare for the pledge, I'm going to have our special guest come forward. We have a special guest here tonight, the Bednarzic Junior High Robotics Team is visiting with us. They are from Bednarzic Junior High, out in the southeast part of Aurora, and they're going to come forward and lead us in the pledge tonight.
How old are you?
This is a robotics team of Bednarzic, they have several robotics teams. This is the seventh grade robotics team.
Flag is right over there, ladies and gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God of our weary years, God of our silent tears, that was brought us such far in the way. Father God, we thank you for allowing us to come together for another city council meeting. We ask so God that you be with us as we make the city more effective city. We ask so God that you be with all the men and women of our armed forces, those that are serving, those that are serving, as well as the men and women of our police department, those that are serving, those that are serving. We ask that you be with everyone that is representing here today and be with the young people who did the pledge and allegiance. And Lord, we just ask that you be with the city of Aurora as we get ready to go into Thanksgiving, and we just pray that all people have a great Thanksgiving. We ask all your name.
Amen. Thank you, Alderman Hartburns, and thank you to the Bednarzic team that will be hearing from, robotics team that we'll be hearing from a little bit later this evening. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the Tuesday twelfth, November twelfth meeting? It's been moved by Alderman Sherman Jenkins, second. I'm sorry, so moved by Alderman Hartburns, seconded by Alderman Franco. Alderman Jenkins will abstain as he was absent. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Is there a motion to approve the appointment of Sergeant Arms for this meeting? It's been a motion by Alderman Hartburns, seconded by Alderman Franco, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Now Clayton, we have some other youth sitting here in the audience. Can you tell us a little bit about them?
Most definitely. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, City Council. We are excited tonight, ladies and gentlemen, we are joined by state champions. We give them a round of applause, the J.B. Easter or Tomcat Football League, Class 2A, two thousand and nineteen state champions of the Chicago Youth Football League. We're very proud of these twenty-four young gentlemen and their coaches and team leaders for taking them to the state championship all the way to the backs. They're comprised of seventh and eighth graders, Mayor. They had an impressive eight-to-one regular season and earned the number-two seed in the top bracket to compete in the Super Bowl State Championship on November seventeenth. On that Sunday at Carmel High School, they faced off against Buffalo Row Bills and were victorious in a nineteen-to-sixteen victory. Giving back the state championship trophy right here to Aurora, Illinois. We're very proud of them, we're going to ask the mayor to step down, and they represent the east side, so the east side aldermen, if you like, come on down as we honor these young superstars. We're going to begin with the coaching team, want them to come down and recognize them with Mayor's Award of Excellence, and then we will ask Coach Calderon, Sam Calderon, the head coach, to share a few words about the team. Then we'll bring the guys down. Gentlemen, these are the aldermen of the east side. So those of you going east, they represent all of you. All right, if we can give a round of applause to head coach, Sam Calderon. Assistant coach, Joel Eldezma. Defensive coordinator, Raymond Brown. Assistant coach, Mike Gonzalez. Assistant coach, Tony Olivas. Keep the applause going for assistant coach, Tony Estrada. And assistant coach, Tito Di Alaba. DM coordinator, Jennifer Casas. Casas, Eldezma, and our team mom. Big round of applause for Celeste Valone. We're going to ask Coach Calderon to share a little bit about the team. We have a mic down there, coach, and then we'll bring the guys down.
We've got another assistant head coach, Luis Estrella.
Luis Estrella, come on down, big round of applause, Luis Estrella.
Just want to thank everybody for having us out, you know. Some of these kids have been in this program since we started, since two thousand and thirteen. Never got their chance to win a Super Bowl. I think this is the third time that our program has had a team up here. And seven years of hard work, a lot of these guys put in, and they finally get a chance before they go to high school. They finally won it, they finally did it. It's a lot of dedication and hard work. You know, everybody goes through trials and tribulations in life, especially coming from the city of Aurora, the east side. Particularly, we try to change the image of that and try to make sure that we change the culture, the football culture especially on the east side. Sixteen of these guys will be going to high school, hopefully, when they get to high school, will be able to be in the playoffs and win a high school state championship, so. I want to thank my coaches staff, and thank everybody who helped make this possible, and all the parents out there. You know, without you guys believing in, leaving me, us with your kids, and believing that we was setting them in the right direction, this would never have been possible, so thank all the parents, thank the coaches staff.
Big round of applause for all the parents, thank you, good to be in the audience.
Just thank all the kids for all the hard work they put in, you know. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Assistant coach, Tony Estrella as well, make sure we give him another shout-out. So we're going to ask that you applaud as we bring our young champions down as they represent Aurora. All right, gentlemen, you're going to receive a Mayor's Award of Excellence, the certificate. From one of your aldermen, you'll receive the Medal of Excellence, and from Alderman Yamas, you'll receive a gift from the Schmidt Brothers, who owned a number of McDonald's in Aurora. They want to give you a special gift to take home with you as well. Okay, so, big round of applause, and we're doing alphabetical order, not numerical order. Big round of applause for Jeremiah Brown. You can stand right by your coaches. Number two, that's Jeremiah. Round of applause for number one, Montana Calderon. Number four, Ken Cooley. Number twenty-one, Gabriel Cox. Oh, you got to keep the applause going, these are the state champs. Number six, Carlos Cruz. Number eleven, Jacob Cruz. Number twelve, Omar Cruz. Number thirty-three, Lino Di Alba. Number three. Number seven, Anthony Estrada. Number five, Luis Estrella. Number thirty, Jesse Estrella. Number seventeen, Christian Flores. Number ten, Romain Forbes. Number twenty-four, Calvin Lane Junior. Number ninety-nine, Abel Lescano. He's one of the two thousand and nineteen state champ, Super Bowl champs of the Chicago Land Youth Football League. Number eight, Amado Martinez. Number thirty-two, Isaiah S. Mata. Number twenty, Andrew Morales. Number nine, Raoul Jose Navahar Junior. Number thirteen, Alexander Olivas. Number forty-five, Jesus Silva Junior. Number three, Alex J. Valone. And number fifty-two, Arnold Walker. Big round of applause, ladies and gentlemen, the J.B. Easter or Tomcat Youth Football League, the two thousand and nineteen Super Bowl State Champs of the Chicago Land Youth Football League, Class 2A. Big Aurora round of applause for our state champs bringing home the trophy to the city of lights. Again, eighty percent of these young people are headed into their freshman year at East River High School. So we are proud of this feeder league as they move on to Roy E. Davis Field and build upon that Tomcat legacy, prepared with championships and skills and techniques that we know they'll take far as they continue to represent us here in Aurora. One more big round of applause for the J.B. Easter or Tomcat Youth Football League, state champions, two thousand and nineteen. Very proud of you all, thank you so much. Congratulations, coaches and parents.
I want you guys to do me a favor before we get started with the agenda. I want you to give me a big old "Eeeey!" Can we get one? Come on now, you can do better than that. Show me what you got. "Eeeey!" There you go. Let's give it up for the kids one more time. Now, before we get on to public comment, I have you guys read the preamble. I'd like, Alderman Hartburns would like to address the crowd about an event that went on yesterday.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. On yesterday, the esteemed mayor and some of the council had the opportunity to do what I call some good Thanksgiving mission work. We started with Lutheran Services, Alderman Franco War. We also went to Constitution House, Centennial House. And then we went on, oh my God, I'm getting emotional because. Then we went on to Indian Noe. The mayor was raising Indian Noe, it was so powerful that we saw a man that lived in that apartment building. The mayor's humble beginning, he had been injured, but to see the mayor pass him the turkey, the food, he was elated. We were too. But that Alderman Franco said something that kind of knocked my socks off, and you know, I don't wear socks all the time, but I'm telling you. What he said was, him going to all the locations, we had ten in all, but going to all the locations, he said, said Alderman Franco, and I'm going to repeat it after you, that was awesome.
I said, there was this memorable, the second, third most memorable moment in my life behind having my children and getting married, because it was very, it was heartwarming to see the expression on those people's faces when we brought them those turkey dinners and how we, as a city, turn about values.
It was so powerful. Then we left from Indian Noe and we went to Sacred Heart Church. We left from there. We went to Main Baptist, Forest Ridge. And then we went out to Impact Church by the mall. Then we went to Alderman Bill Danell's area, South Wind. South Wind is where the city of Aurora Public Information Officer, Clay Muhammad, lived. He grew up there. It was powerful. Tell me how you felt.
Shakita, it's wonderful that the city can do things like this, to make Thanksgiving a happy day for all our residents that maybe otherwise couldn't afford to have a great turkey dinner, so. I want to thank you and the mayor both for helping put this together, and it really is a great Thanksgiving tradition.
Alderman, man, imagine, tell us how you felt.
It was my first year participating in this, and it was great to be able to be in my own neighborhood and giving back to the same community that the Mayor Irving was raising, and like Alderman Hartburns mentioned, just to see the look on people's faces was, it was really good to know that we're able to help people, and I really want to give my thanks to the mayor and to Alderman Hartburns for putting that on and to keep, you know, that tradition alive, and I look forward to doing it again next year.
Alderman Garza, tell us how you feel just giving to those that's in need.
Well, I'm so happy, really. In our community is a lot of need. I know a lot of people is in a very good condition and they can buy a turkey or whatever, or dinner, but as, in our area, we have so many families really need, and they are so happy. And thank you, Mayor, for doing this, because they are so, so happy to count and at least taking care, and then in a special day. Because sometimes they not even have to have the whole dinner. Yes, because sometimes some of these families going to the food pantries, and they can have turkey, they don't have the other stuff. So when they saw the dinners complete, they are so, so happy, and they say, "Thank you, Mayor," really.
Alderman O'Connor, he came, he was at three locations on the west side, and you know, he loved the Department of Aging, so he went to the senior, I'm sorry, I'm going to say his little too, but he went to the seniors area, but he was just so excited about that, come on, Alderman O'Connor.
Boy, what a setup there. And I didn't have a walker either, Shakita. My wife and I have a little tradition, it really came from my grandchildren, when they were doing it. Every day, we ask each other, "What are you thankful for?" And we have so much to be thankful for. And one of the things is simply that there is a world here that makes the best efforts possible to reach out and help people. That you give something back, you give something to people, and that's what happened yesterday. And the warmth of the faces, the joy seeing everyone there is just worth it twenty times more than anything you can imagine. The best part of it is to give them all a hard time, and we wanted to know what time they were eating on Thursday so that we could attend, right?
Now, y'all heard him say that, because the mayor said that everywhere we went. Now, y'all make sure y'all said, "Mayor, say it this for me, Mayor, you got a lot of food to eat."
Yeah, so, thank you to the mayor, thank you to Shakita. Great, great way to start the Thanksgiving week, and something that will happen every year now, so we appreciate it.
I know that Alderman Messiakos had due the turkey raffle, and those proceeds went to...
Thank you for the opportunity, we had our seventh annual Third Ward Turkey Raffle, and what we try to do, especially with a whole bunch of individuals out of the Third Ward, is have a opportunity to take the burden off the food pantries and provide turkey dinners. But it's not really about the dinners, it's about continuing the culture, making sure that the young people today have an opportunity to have a Thanksgiving meal and understand what it's all about, and make sure that that American good old tradition continues.
And I have to say, I know the other aldermen may not have had the low-income areas like we had, but they all rally with us. Give this hand, give this hand. They all rally with us to make sure we do the job and get the job done. But I know that, you know, with all of us together, we show love to everyone, and because of that, the mayor would tell y'all what he feel and how we've been able to do this, but more importantly, how he felt going to the door where he was raised, all right, Mayor? All right.
Well, Thanksgiving is more than about, and I would say this to the young people that are sitting out there, you know, when we come up on Thanksgiving, you look at it as time off school and an opportunity to eat with your families, some turkey and maybe a little bit of pie, something that makes you smile, but it's more than about, you know, the time off and the food that you eat, it's about giving back to our community. It's about showing that you care about your fellow student, the kids sitting next to your fellow man here, and all these aldermen sitting here that all participated, not just on yesterday, or Monday, when we delivered those turkeys, but all throughout the year. The reason they do what they do is because they care about our fellow men, they care about our community, they care about you, and making sure that you have everything you need to be very good students here and live safely in the city of Aurora. Now, when I knocked on that door of four seventeen Eastern Trail Apartment A, where I grew up, out in Aurora Housing Authority, and that man, a young man opened the door, you know, and we were able to give him the turkey in this house that I lived in for, you know, close to, you know, fifteen years in Aurora Housing Authority, it was a good feeling that, you know, I was able to come give back. Never forget where I grew up, never forget where I came from. Always recognize that that's the foundation of who I am today. But always strive to be something more, something better, because we all, we all have the opportunities. You know, when someone started to believe in me, I began to believe in myself, and now I'm sitting here as the mayor of the second-largest city of the state of Illinois. So you always recognize, you got to give back and believe in yourselves, and believe in what we do in the community, and you'll always, you know, you look forward, you'll definitely be successful. So thank you very much for the opportunity to participate with all the aldermen up here and just give back to the city of Aurora.
You know, my heart is heavy, I rejoice because we have aldermen in this city that love mankind, but we also have a city spokesperson that also went back to where he was from. Just give us a little word how you felt just going back to South Wind, I'm sorry, let's do it.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it, thanks for the opportunity. For the mayor and myself, growing up in public housing, it was full-circle moment. You grew up in Indian Trail, and to watch him stand in front of four seventeen A, same for me, walking back into South Wind, where I was born and raised, and raised and lived there until I graduated college, those full-circle moments, but constantly being reminded that we're never too far from our roots. And it's so important, particularly as you young Tomcats, many of us grew up and raised on the east side of Aurora, graduated from East River High School. Just remember, it can be done. Whatever dreams you have, whatever goals you have, whatever obstacles you may face, it can be done, it can be overcome, and you certainly can achieve dreams and keep moving. These individuals sitting up here prove it every day, so thanks for the opportunity, appreciate it.
And Mayor, I have to say, with you and Clayton coming from humble beginnings, we all came from humble beginnings. So young people, we look like we look here, but we was once from a humble beginning. And we know from what we hear, from the cries of people who have pain, who need food, who need shelter, we know what that feel like as well, but on yesterday, I thank you, Mayor, that we had the opportunity to knock on doors and to share. And then we met in community rooms and we shared. The seniors was over, oh my God. They were bubbling over, they was overwhelmed, you know why? The mayor that they love, that they've seen, that has been there, the aldermen that have been there for them, they saw them giving back. So the moral to the story, if you hadn't heard nothing I said, Thanksgiving is about giving, and young people, give back, as your coaches and your parents are doing for you, you learn to do the same. Give back. Look, the Bible says, "More blessed to give than receive."
Let's give a round of applause, Alderman Hartburns. All right, folks, this has been the exciting part of the city council meeting. We're about to get on to the part that might not be as exciting for you. So at this time, I know you guys, you guys still got to go to school tomorrow? You're out of school, so you want to sit here for the rest of the night? No, you're like, you're like, okay, the parents are like, "No, we want to get up out here, we got to take y'all home and do so." So anyway, I'll give it, before we start the regular portion of our agenda, I'll give you a few minutes to follow up if you choose to. If you want to sit here and listen to the rest of the agenda, feel free to do so, but if not, I'll give you an opportunity to leave, so we can start the boring part of the meeting. All right? You're very welcome, very welcome. You're very welcome, you guys take it easy. You take it easy, my brother, I'll see you. Indian Trail is not Indian. All right, it looks like everyone that wants to leave has left, and thank you guys for staying along with us. We'll try to get through this meeting as expeditiously as we can. Madam Court, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
All right, ma'am, can you read the preamble, please?
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the city council for up to three minutes with a maximum of thirty minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for a public comment during his or her comments. Members of the city council should not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
All right, can you call the first speaker, Court?
David Faulkner.
There is Mr. Faulkner in the room. David Faulkner. There appears to be no Mr. Faulkner, can you call the next person on the list?
No further speakers, Mr. Mayor.
All righty, well, let's go on to the next portion of our agenda, the public hearing. Will the clerk please read the title of the public hearing? Will the clerk please read the title of the public hearing?
Nineteen dash one zero seven eight, a public hearing as required by Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended regarding the proposed issuance by the city of Aurora, Kane, DuPage, Will, and Kendall Counties of its revenue bonds in one or more series in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed forty-five million dollars. Public hearing for Legisstar Item nineteen dash one zero zero one.
Is there anyone who would like to be heard for the purpose of the public comment on this particular item? Public hearing is now open.
Mr. Mayor, will you close the public hearing?
Before I close the public hearing, may I ask, are there any questions or comments from the city council as to the public hearing? All right? There's been a motion, a second to close the public hearings, hearing no additional persons wishing to be heard. This hearing is adjourned. Can you roll the call, call the roll on that, I'm sorry.
Motion to Hardburn.
I've been, the motion made by Hardburn, seconded by Alderman Franco to close the public hearing. Clerk, can you call, please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hardburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor? Eleven A's.
All right, their hearing is hereby adjourned. Clerk, will you now read the announcements that will require no council action?
Nineteen dash one zero zero three, introduce an ordinance designating the city of Aurora River Benton Tax Increment Financing District Redevelopment Project Area. Nineteen dash one zero one zero, introduce an ordinance approving the city of Aurora River Benton Tax Increment Financing District Redevelopment Project Area Redevelopment Plan and Project. Nineteen dash one zero one one, introduce an ordinance adopting tax increment financing for the city of Aurora River Benton Tax Increment Financing District. Nineteen dash one zero one three, introduce an ordinance designating the city of Aurora Galena Broadway Tax Increment Financing District Redevelopment Project Area. Nineteen dash one zero one four, introduce an ordinance approving the city of Aurora Galena Broadway Tax Increment Financing District Redevelopment Project Area Redevelopment Plan and Project. Nineteen dash one zero one five, introduce an ordinance adopting tax increment financing for the city of Aurora Galena Broadway Tax Increment Financing District.
Thank you. So, the clerk now, please read the consent agenda in full.
Nineteen dash zero seven eight four, resolution authorizing expenditure in the amount of thirteen thousand three hundred twenty dollars to SNI Solutions Incorporated, two oh five North Stewart Street, Janusio, Illinois six one two five four, for runway de-icing fluid for the remainder of the 2019 budget year. Nineteen dash zero eight three three, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of motor fuel tax funds for snow removal operations in 2020. MFT section number two zero dash zero 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 dash zero zero dash GM in an amount up to one million eight hundred twenty thousand. Nineteen dash zero eight eight nine, a resolution approving the purchase and installation of new garage bay doors, openers, and associated hardware for fire station number three for thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars from Overhead Door Company of Rockford. Nineteen dash zero nine zero four, a resolution authorizing a scheduled inventory reagent replacement plan with the HACH Company for the water production division. Nineteen dash zero nine zero five, a resolution authorizing a two-year instrumentation service agreement with the HACH Company for the water production division. Nineteen dash zero nine zero seven, an ordinance establishing a special use planned development approving the Avalon Heights Plan Description and amending ordinance number three one zero zero being the Aurora zoning ordinance and the zoning map attached thereto to an underlying zoning of R dash five S Multiple Family Dwelling District, OS Office District, and PS Park and Recreation District with a special use plan development for the property located along Weston Avenue and Seminary Avenue between South Lincoln Avenue and South Fourth Street. Nineteen dash zero nine zero eight, a resolution approving a preliminary plat for Avalon Heights Subdivision located along Weston Avenue and Seminary Avenue between South Lincoln Avenue and South Fourth Street. Nineteen dash zero nine zero nine, a resolution approving a preliminary plan for Avalon Heights Subdivision located along Weston Avenue and Seminary Avenue between South Lincoln Avenue and South Fourth Street. Nineteen dash zero nine six six, a resolution requesting authorization for the mayor to execute the local agency agreement for federal participation with the state of Illinois, the director of purchasing to sign the Phase Two Preliminary Engineering Agreement with Patrick Engineering Incorporated and the appropriation of motor fuel tax funds for Edelon Drive Bike Way Project, MFT number one six dash zero zero three one two dash zero zero dash BT. Nineteen dash zero nine eight five, a resolution awarding contracts to supply processed chemicals to Alexander Chemical, Mississippi Lime, and Cabot Norit Americas for the Water Production Division. Nineteen dash zero nine eight six, a resolution requesting approval to pay the annual renewal with Essella Incorporated of San Ramon, California for their public stuff customer relationship management CRM hosted solution in the amount of thirty-five thousand three hundred ninety-one dollars and forty-nine cents. Nineteen dash zero nine eight seven, a resolution awarding bid to Midwest Veterinary Supply Incorporated for the Animal Care and Control Division for an initial term ending December thirty-first, 2020 with the option of two one-year extensions based on mutual concept. Nineteen dash zero nine nine four, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to enter into an agreement with Electrical Resource Management four zero one, South Carlton Avenue, Wheaton, Illinois six zero one eight seven, in the amount of eighty-two thousand two hundred and eighty dollars for the purchase of lighting materials for various locations downtown. Nineteen dash zero nine nine nine, a resolution authorizing the city of Aurora to enter into an updated agreement for use of an outdoor firearms range between the Kendall County Sheriff's Office and the Aurora Police Department. Nineteen dash one zero zero zero, resolution adopting unit price bids for the purchase of various water and sewer repair materials for the 2020 calendar year. Nineteen dash one zero zero two, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed nine million dollars aggregate principal amount of general obligation refunding bonds series two zero one nine of the city of Aurora, Kane, DuPage, Kendall, Will Counties, Illinois, and providing for the lobbying collection of a direct annual tax for the payment of the principal of an interest on said bonds and related matters. Finance Committee Agenda Item November fourteenth to 2019 meeting. Nineteen dash one zero zero four, a resolution to authorize the director of purchasing to execute an agreement with Alfred Benish and Company of one two three zero East Deal Road Suite one zero nine, Neveerville, Illinois six zero five six three for the rotary plaza, pedestrian bridge removal and walkway reconstruction final plans in the amount of sixty thousand two hundred dollars. Nineteen dash one zero zero five, a resolution accepting plumbing service bids for the water and sewer maintenance division. Nineteen dash one zero zero six, a resolution for the city of Aurora through the Aurora Police Department to enter into an agreement with West Aurora School District one twenty-nine concerning police school resource officer program and crossing guard program at West Aurora School District one twenty-nine. Nineteen dash one zero zero nine, a resolution accepting the improvements in maintenance security for seafood properties eight nine eight Meridian Lake Drive. Nineteen dash one zero one two, a resolution accepting the improvements in maintenance security for Marywood Meadows South.
Second.
There's been a motion by Alderman Hardburns and a second by Alderman Sherman Jenkins to approve the consent agenda. Before we entertain those, is there any motions to remove anything from the consent agenda or any questions about any items on the consent agenda? With no motions to remove items or no questions, the motions to approve stand. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hardburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor? Eleven A's.
Motion carries, the consent agenda is approved. Now, I see we have a number of students out in the audience. Many of them I know from Big Narsec and students from other schools as well. Alderman Bug, can you explain exactly what just happened with the consent agenda and how we got there?
Definitely. For some of the students who stayed, we did a tour earlier in the evening. We talked about last week, we had a meeting called Committee of the Whole. At that time, we looked at all of these matters. We came to agreement on these matters and there were no questions, there was no one in dissent and no one disagreeing on those matters. So, we put it on what's called Consent Agenda. We've already agreed and we said we're going to vote on those all at once after they're red. Matters that we did not disagree on will go on the second section of the agenda and that's called Unfinished Business and that's what we'll go to next.
Thank you, kind sir. All right, well, then let's go on Unfinished Business. This is Alderman Bug pointed out. Clerk, will you read the first item under Unfinished Business?
Nineteen dash one zero zero one, an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of adjustable rate demand economic development revenue bonds Aurora University in one or more series of the city of Aurora, Kane, DuPage, Will, and Kendall Counties, Illinois in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed forty-five million dollars and confirming the sale thereof. Authorizing the execution and delivery of one or more loan agreements, trust indentures, bond purchase agreements, and related documents. Authorizing the distribution of one or more official statements, providing the delivery of one or more letters of credit, one or more reimbursement agreements, and one or more remarketing agreements, and authorizing certain related matters.
There's been a motion by Alderman Hardburns, seconded by Alderman Jenkins. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this ordinance? There being no questions or discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hardburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven A's.
All right. The motion carries, I'm sorry, the motion carries ordinance is adopted. Can you read the second item under Unfinished Business?
Nineteen dash one zero three zero, resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to enter into an agreement with the architectural engineering design team of Kluber Incorporated, ten South Shumway Avenue, Batavia, Illinois six zero five one zero, and Cuny Architects LLC one zero five zero five Corporate Drive Suite one hundred, Pleasant Prairie, Wisconsin five three one five eight, in the amount of one million eight hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for a new consolidated public works facility.
Second.
There's been a motion by Alderman Hardburns, seconded by Alderman Garza. Before we take any questions, comments from the council, will you please, Mr. Schroff, give an overview of what we're talking about here with the public works facility?
Yes, sir. At the COW meeting, everyone asked for a quick, brief overview of how we got to where we are with these decisions. So, kind of go back in time here, look at some slides that had to deal with the purchase of the property. So, every five years, the city does an assessment of our publicly owned buildings and it basically comes up with a deferred maintenance plan. And you can see the three properties that questioned today, Electrical Department, Location, Water and Sewer Department, and Central Garage, they've got deferred revenue, deferred maintenance requirements of five point three million dollars. And basically, that's because every one of these properties basically were brought into our inventory not with a specific purpose for what we're using them for. They are all repurposed buildings and so throughout decades, every division has been told that we're going to build another facility, so don't put a lot of money into it. So, that's how we end up with such a high maintenance cost in front of us. So, quick overview of the three facilities, the Electrical Maintenance and Downtown Services Building, that's actually got the cheapest repair cost. This is at the end of Middle Avenue. What we would like to do after building a new public works services portion of this building within the same envelope, basically take electrical out, repair the roof, do some minor adjustments, and have more space for the Downtown Services Department, which obviously we would not want to relocate them to another location because we can drive all the equipment very quickly to the downtown areas from here. The Water and Sewer Maintenance Division, this is at the, near the end of River Street, right in front of Hesett House. You can see it in the corner, top right slide. This would act as a great backup facility for the public works facility if something, God forbid, happened. And we also would like to keep this facility, not invest nine hundred thousand dollars into it, but simply repair the roof and use it for interior storage for the millions of dollars' worth of equipment that we have exposed to the elements right now. This is the big one. This is the Central Garage location. You're very familiar with it, I'm sure, corner of Illinois and twenty-five, prime real estate, right on Illinois Avenue. You can see four point two million dollars' worth of deferred maintenance. Here's some of the comments from the report, very poor condition, potentially requiring complete facility replacement. Building envelope has completely failed with numerous roof and wall leaks. And I've got pictures here if everyone, anyone wants to see them, but it shows through various poor conditions throughout that facility. The idea here would be to demolish this building, keep the salt storage facility at that location until the very day that we had a development opportunity at that location. So, knowing that all these facilities needed some major portion of maintenance, we looked to see where other properties were available. As you know, we negotiated this piece of property for purchase, twenty-five acres. It's more centrally located than another property owned to the north. Twenty-five acres, we purchased this property for one point one million dollars. At the same time, we were negotiating with the tollway to sell this piece of property. This is the one that was actually purchased by the water utility for a little over a million dollars in the nineteen nineties. We sold it to the tollway. The closing happened just this month and we received six million dollars for that property. And as you can tell from the picture, this is the city limits on the top here. It's about as far north as you could physically get in the city of Aurora and that portion of the city. So, we sold that and were able to take the profits towards the new building. So, where are we at today? The contract before you is for the design services for the new facility out on Liberty Street in New York. In the 2019 budget, right now, what we have is three million dollars of MFT. That's for the motor, that's for the fueling station and the construction of a big dome potentially in the corner of the concept plan that you see to the right. We have three point seven million in capital improvement funds also budgeted this year and the water utility has two million dollars budgeted this year. So, right now, we have about eight point seven million dollars in the 2019 budget. And the contract that's before you tonight is with Kluber Architects and Cuny Architects. It's a joint contract that would include all three phases that you see listed there. And a little source of confusion from the last COW meeting, as I said, you're used to seeing the engineering department come forward with a concept plan, a concept engineering, preliminary engineering, final engineering, construction engineering. This contract is all three and that also includes the mechanical engineering component, electrical, and plumbing components, too. So, our original intention this year was to try and get the salt dome and the fueling station built this year, but it's really difficult to try and figure out what size, what grade, what location to put these facilities without having the entire plan done. So, the contract before you today would not only design the building, would design all those other components and then we can have a better handle on where these things should go next year and then carry these funds over and build at least the salt dome and the fueling station and we'd really like to get the foundation going for the building.
Thank you, sir. Now, any questions or comments from the council? Alderman Franco?
Again, I want to thank you and your staff for putting this together. You know, it's a little frustrating sometimes when you guys do such a great job presenting something four or five months ago, give us the details, and then we ask questions about why are we doing that again four or five months later, like we forget. So, I want to thank you for having the patience to deal with some of the questions that we have asked and answered and asked and answered again. I'm not saying we don't ask the right questions, but I wish sometimes we would do our homework so you guys don't have to go through this because I know there's a lot of other things you could be doing instead of presenting and re-presenting. So, I want to thank you for that, for having your patience and all the staff for doing the great work over the last few years, even though sometimes we kind of forget what you told us the first time, so you tell us the second time. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman, and many of the division heads that'll be in this new building are here, too, and we thank you for all of your support over the years.
Alderman Hardburns?
I do know what Alderman Franco said because the person that asked for us to put it on unfinished is not here, but we thank you for the fine job that you do. We thank you for all your loving kindness and your patience with us because a lot of times, things have been coming to you that we would have to be going through tonight if...
Any other questions or comments? There being none, and a motion and a second is already on the floor. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hardburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven A's.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. Congratulations, Mr. Schroff.
Thank you very much.
All right. Requests and referrals listed on the agenda are referred to the Planning Council and Planning Commission. Is there a motion to accept and file the treasurer's report? There's been a motion by Alderman Hardburns, seconded by Alderman Seville. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Is there a motion to approve and pay the bills listed on the agenda? There's been a motion by Alderman Hardburns, seconded by Alderman Franco. Will the clerk please call the, is anybody having questions on the bills? Being none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hardburns? Alderman Smith?
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven A's.
Motion carries, the bills are approved. There being no further motion, this is becoming for the council, Alderman Hartburns has made a motion to adjourn. This has been seconded by Alderman Jenkins, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, this meeting is adjourned, I'll see y'all in December. Happy Thanksgiving.